I guess we're on. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, September 20th, 2018. Please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is the best and man, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening comments, Mr. Lombard?
I'm all set.
Mr. Verrill?
I think I'm all set.
Okay. Well, once again, I'd like to thank the police and fire for the work that they did a couple of weeks ago down at the back rocks. The man was so excited that he and the woman went out and baked some cookies for the police and fire. I thought that was really neat. So, thank you again, you guys. B, approved the minutes of nine thirteen?
Nine thirteen.
Nine thirteen, sorry, eighteen, and executive session of eight eight eighteen.
Okay, I moved at the Board of Selectmen to approve the minutes of nine thirteen eighteen, and the executive session minutes of eight eight eighteen. Say it.
Comments?
I've looked over the executive session minutes, and they look okay. I'm happy with it.
Good. No further comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, Mrs. Next on the agenda is Citizens Forum. Anyone like to get up?
Pete Rogers, forty-four Pearl Road, Nahant. As I recall, at last week's meeting, some business was left on the table. I want to make a comment. You're familiar with this map. I won't unroll it. I'm one of the people in the pink, orange, and yellow zones affected by that Wetlands Protection Bylaw. I would like to suggest that some of the serious environmentalists in the town refer to the state Wetlands Protection Law that's many, many pages and has been part of our bylaws for close to half a century. I would like to suggest that they read the twenty-seven pages of the stormwater bylaw that was passed unanimously at an annual town meeting in 2015. There are a number of useful things about having to do with stormwater. I would like to suggest further that people read the hundred-and-forty-seven pages of the Hazard Mitigation Plan of 2014 so that they can be assured that this town has done a great deal to think about and protect its environment, and this bylaw is not the only thing at work. Next, as a contributor to MNPT, I feel completely betrayed by this bylaw for two reasons, among many others. It will lower the value of my property, and it will make it more difficult to protect it in future. This bylaw was not necessary. Its sole function, really, was to push the extra hundred-foot buffer zone up against the Northeastern property. And I am not the only person who feels this way, trust me. And if there's not some kind of redress through the political process, there are other means. Mr. Lombard described very accurately the problems that happened at that special town meeting. We will be beginning an educational campaign with drops and mailings so that people can be informed about how this affects them personally. And I just want to say one final thing. I brought up a question last week. I'm not sure there's an answer to it. It wasn't then, but behind all the fundraising, there had to be a strategy or a plan. I believe it was the plan about this taking by eminent domain. As I pointed out, two-thirds of the people and the voters have to authorize the selectman to engage in a taking. I also want to warn you that the assessed value of the Northeastern property at this point is six million dollars. The proposed building is fifty million dollars under highest and best use. That is a risk of fifty-six million dollars that the taxpayers could possibly have to pick up. Now, they may argue, we only want a little slice of it. That's too big a gamble, and I don't quite understand why the specialist in eminent domain is still on the payroll.
Thank you, Pete.
Marilyn Mahoney, I live at one seventy-nine Willow Road. I'd like to make a recommendation for the selectmen to consider. The Citizens Forum being at the beginning of a meeting causes a bit of a disconnect between what's being discussed and citizens' feedback, for example. Pete just was reflecting on what was transpired during the conversation last week. I think it would be more meaningful for the people at home that are watching on a particular night to be able to hear the discussion of the selectmen and then hear citizens' input in the same evening. Having it, I think your meetings are usually at a two-week interval. Am I correct? It's every other week, usually. So, conceivably, an issue could come up, for example, tonight, and we in the audience might have some feelings that we'd want clarification about something. And to wait two weeks to be able to respond, I think, is unfair, especially for people that might not have been at the meeting the two weeks previous. So, I think it would just be better to keep things open and transparent for the public. If, and if people are at home and they hear something that they feel passionately about, whether it's pro or con, they can hop in their car and run down here and have an opportunity to address their concerns with you. Certainly hopeful that the promise of being open and transparent and allowing public input in the negotiations as we move forward will happen. Seventeen hundred people signed a petition totally against any expansion of Northeastern in this town. So, as was said by, I believe, both UT and Richie last week, that you represent the constituents of this town. They spoke very loudly. So, I'm hoping that you're going to honor what you had in front of you. You wrote letters that went into Northeastern in support. You signed the petition along with seventeen hundred people in this community. That's more than two-thirds of the voting public here. So, I'm just reminding you. And I just want to quote one thing. Northeastern, published in one of their magazines, just as a word of caution, there's a line in here in which they say, because they're starting a new partnership in Cuba, because their initiative is, as you know, they want to be global. It says, "We are not going there," meaning Cuba, "to discover Cuba. We are going to work with the people who have lived there forever and are concerned about preserving their environment. They have been in our community for fifty-one years. I'm hoping and praying that through these negotiations, they will give us the same respect." Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Roger Posensky, thirty-six Wallah Cave Road. As Marilyn said a few months ago, more than seventeen hundred Nahant citizens signed a petition which was delivered to Northeastern and stated that we wanted them to stop all plans for an expansion which included a very large glass building and much increased water pumping out of the local ocean. I told that the three of you signed that and also wrote letters, and I attended other meetings where the three of you made wonderful, strong statements that you were a hundred percent against the Northeastern expansion. Needless to say, I was quite surprised last week by the three actions that you folks did. First was to announce a reset in the relations with Northeastern University, and invited four of them here. The second was to disband a liaison committee between yourselves and Keep Nahant Wild, which everybody knows is an organization that's been working very hard and diligently on this issue. And the third was to ask for a revote of the recently passed Wetlands Law, Wetlands Bylaw. The purpose of it, which clearly everybody knows, was to restrict and make more difficult Northeastern's expansion. So, now I'm confused, and I think many of our town citizens are also. Is the board, who's now taking control of all discussions with Northeastern, still a hundred percent committed to stopping this expansion? If not, it would be prudent for all of you to state your new views on the issue and your intentions. You are our leaders, and it is important for us to know what you're thinking and where you stand. The future of East Point, which is a gorgeous natural resource for all Nahant citizens to enjoy, is at stake. We would love to preserve it for our great-grandchildren, and I'm sure you all would too. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Sorry, can you get up a second time? Because the Citizens Forum is at the beginning, and I'm looking at this agenda, and I see that the special town meeting follow-up is on the agenda, I have no idea what you're going to be sharing with us, and we won't have an opportunity to speak. So, all of us that attended that night, it was a hot overcrowded evening for everyone, whether the people were pro or con on the issue. I believe, and I don't know if any of you know, how expensive a town meeting is to hold. And if you're contemplating holding another town meeting, I think we need to let the public know how expensive it's going to be, because I understand we're in fiscal constraints in our town. Also, the special town meeting, people spoke. Maybe you didn't like the way it came out. Could've gone either way. I turned to my husband, Bill, during the meeting, and I said, and by the way, during town meetings, there's always people in line when someone calls the question. That wasn't unique to that evening. That has happened time and time again at town meetings. So, the question was called, the vote was taken. At that point, I said to my husband, Bill, what will be, will be. You know, it is what it is. I was kind of relieved. We were all hot. We were way overcrowded. Lots of people got up and left. And I just think we should take it as a teachable moment. I don't know who's in charge of protocol at meetings, town meetings, but maybe there are some revisions that you should consider. For example, if there does have to be a paper vote, you could set up stations. People could come up to the station and check in and get checked off on the list. I mean, I personally feel most Nahant residents are very ethical people. No one offered me a second vote, a second ballot. If someone took it, that's upon them for being fraudulent. But I don't, I have a lot more faith in the citizens of this town than people trying to be deceptive and pack the vote. So, I think there was lessons to be learned. It was way overcrowded. It was way too hot. It went on way too long. Maybe you need to restrict the time people are allowed to speak. I always thought it was the protocol for the agencies that are bringing forth an idea to speak first, get it out there, and then the public can respond. So, I don't believe there was any, in my view, that's the way it should be, that people should get up there, educate the public about what's being considered, and then you can have public comment. Maybe we need to restrict the time. Some people went on and on and on, and I don't want to go on and on tonight, but I just think it's something before, maybe you should think about putting a survey out there and asking the public if they want to go through this again. Listening to a few constituents that might have called you on the phone is not reflective of the five-hundred-plus people that were there that evening. So, I'd love it if you would consider that before you, you know, put a big, huge expense and an inconvenience on people that have already spoken.
Julie Tarmey, thirty-four Forty Steps Lane. I came here tonight just to observe, but having listened to people, I feel I need to express something. I'm a person who deals in facts, and a fact that I understand is that the selectmen are the people who should be talking with Northeastern. If I want to make revisions to my home and people have concerns and questions about what I want to do, I would hope that I wouldn't have a group of people coming to me and saying, "We don't think you should do this. Let us work with you," as opposed to the official person in town or people in town who should be dealing with me, like the building inspector or the selectman or the town administrator. I am not for the expansion at Northeastern. I wore my Keep Nahant Wild t-shirt for a couple, the last couple of days. But I really think that it should be something that the town officials are working with Northeastern to work it out somehow. I appreciate everything that everyone has done. I'm not happy with the vote results because I'm in that new yellow zone, but that being said, I don't think we should go through the expense of a special town meeting. We voted. It's done. Now, if it comes up in the future again, like it did with the lobster traps, let's say, and it gets reversed, then so be it. But to call a special town meeting to vote again, I don't think is the route we want to take. But I hope that the people who have been working so diligently as private liaisons or groups that have taken it upon themselves to try to work things out in a professional, calm manner. I think it's wonderful that they took the initiative, but I think it falls to you folks to take care of it, to do the talking with the Northeastern people. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
There are two separate but related issues here that have to do with the special town meeting. One has to do with the opposition to Northeastern. The other has to do with what that bylaw does to your fellow citizens. Now, I've heard a lot of talk about the seventeen hundred signatures, as though that was a statement, a definitive statement of the town. I was one of those signatories. Much better measure of it was the special town meeting itself. If these people who are opposed to another special town meeting are so sublimely confident in those seventeen hundred signatures standing up for them, they should have no problem with a revote.
Now, that special town meeting that we held, the Board of Selectmen had nothing to do with it. We did not, you know, we wanted it actually in September, and there was a petition set forth, and that petition was put on the ballot. And the Board of Selectmen did not control that meeting. The town moderator is responsible for doing and running meetings, special town meeting or annual town. So, the board, you know, we had, we recommended that that vote and that special town meeting, the first petition, that we have it in September, give us some chance to, you know, get everyone out and get it advertised and properly everyone aware of everything. But again, the Board of Selectmen, we, our hands were completely tied. Once that petition was received by the board, there's a series of events that happens from the day it's received. And they wanted, they moved the, they moved the, the board voted for the third week in September, and they had another petition, necessary votes, which is no problem, to have it in August. So, the special, the day that the special town meeting was taken out of our hands. Once that happened, then when you come to the actual special town meeting, the town moderator runs that meeting and responsible for that meeting. The board had nothing, no input, no decision process or anything. The thing that's on the agenda tonight is a discussion about that and what we're going to do, or not do. It's very simple, but the Board of Selectmen will make that decision with the town administrator. And we have council committee here, supposed to be here. I guess they're going to guide us through this process. But I mean, you know, we've never had that many citizens come to the town hall. And the heat was just unbelievable. I mean, you know, but there is no other place we could have held it. The only place was available that we could have done it would have cost us more money because we couldn't have it at a Johnson School. We couldn't have it at the Nahant Country Club. The only place we were thinking about, and there was a discussion about it, was lowlands. Purchase a huge tent for five-hundred people, have it secured, and go through the whole process and the sound system down there. That's the only place we could have held it. There's all the discussion about having the meeting here and then having an empty over the Johnson School or the Country Club on a, on the communications with the screens and all that, which again, would have been a lot more money. But I want everyone to be aware of what's happening. There's no behind-the-doors, there's no secrecy, there's no, everything's coming out right here. The negotiation between Northeastern and the Board of Selectmen, the problem with that, we decided, is there was too many cooks in the stew here, and there was too many rumors and this was going on and that was going on. That's why we closed it down, and we, the Board of Selectmen, decided we're going to handle this directly, one way or the other. But you'll be aware, and you'd be advised exactly what we were doing and not doing, is you're going to hear it live. You're going to hear it live TV. They're going to present, Northeastern's going to present to us, and we're going to, we're going to, you know. So, you'll know exactly which way the negotiations are going or which, who's doing what. So, you know, there's no, you know, secrecy or discussion behind the scenes or under the, nothing like that that are going on. And if you have a question, you can get up in the middle of the forum, the upper forum, and ask it. I know this board will tell you the answers, and they'll tell you point-blank exactly what's going on. There's nothing to hide here, and we're not going to hide anything. But in that meeting was absolutely, how should I put it? I watched the people. I'm not talking about the second vote and all that. I'm talking about people sitting through this in a hundred-degree heat, and they couldn't even sit down. They were sitting on the floor. We just had no room. But there was a push to get it through, and there's questions about that. I mean, not question about the second votes and all that. We're cautioning about, you know, honesty and fairness and, you know, there's nothing to hide here. I think whether we have a special town meeting or we don't have a special town meeting, people voted. That bylaw was approved by the Attorney General this past week, and I don't know what's going to happen now. That's where we're at. I want everyone to know that, so there's no misunderstanding or there's a question in your mind, okay? Did you want to say something? Yes.
Jennifer McCarthy, nineteen Range Road. Just to come back to the words you just said, the people have voted, and the vote was to pass the bylaw. Now, I did not participate many years ago when the Valley Road vote was up, but I understand that only lost by one vote. Was there a revote then? Did the losing team ask for a revote?
No.
No.
The vote on the Valley Road, I believe we had five study committees on the Valley Road, and it was over a series of four years, five years. We just were back and forth what we were going to do. I think the committee, the last committee, voted to tear it down and put two house lots there. And the question was, there was a group of people in the town that came forward, and they came up with the seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe, or whatever that number is. I'm not sure. I can't remember. And the vote was, on the Board of Selectmen, was one-one. And I happened to be out of town. I had to fly from the West Coast back and have a Saturday meeting, and I was the swing vote to save the Valley Road school. I'm not bragging or anything. I just, that's how it is, because the machines were already in the schoolyard down there. They were going to tear it down Monday morning. This was Saturday morning. And I believe, I want to say, Barbaraish was one of that committee that came around and come up with some money that people donated, and we said it.
But there was a special town meeting for that, similar to what happened here a few weeks ago, correct?
There was four annual, or five annual town meetings on that property.
Okay.
And maybe one special.
Okay. But...
Maybe two. I, but the history on that, that thing went around and around so many times, it was like, it's like, you know, it's, it's like the government houses up there in Bass Point, the twelve units. We keep having committees and recommendations, whether to put condos in there or sell the single as is. And it's a discussion that's been going on, and that committees, they've been getting all the input they have. They've had every committee, and they'd be, hopefully, hopefully, they'll have a recommendation for the annual town meeting of what we should do.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask you to think, though, to support the people who did come and vote, and the vote was to accept the bylaw. I'm a teacher, and I tell kids all the time, you don't always win, and you don't.
Yeah.
And so, if you do set another town meeting, and let's just say, in my eyes, worst-case scenario, you rescind the vote on it, who's to say that people don't petition again to have another special town meeting to pass the bylaw?
We've got to get information on that. Legally, I'm not sure if anyone can rescind that vote.
Okay.
Because not only the vote was taken and A, team won, or B, whatever it is, but again, here again, it's, I don't know the procedure. It's never been done here in Nahant.
Okay.
And that vote was taken. The bylaw was sent to the Attorney General. The Attorney General sent it back, approved it. I saw the copy of the letters this past week and the week before. So, I don't know. I don't know, and the attorney's going to hopefully get input into this and say, you know, what can we do or not do? But I don't know. I don't know the answer to these questions, because those questions are legitimate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
I would ask you to remember that the people did vote to accept it. And you said yourself last week, Richie, that you were elected to represent and be the voice of the people.
Oh, absolutely.
And they did speak last time.
I'm not, I'm not, listen, I, but I, you know, I, there's also a sense of, in my, in my, I've always done what's best for the town, number one. Number two, I have a sense of fairness. Number two, I have a sense of fairness, too. And that was a very difficult night. And to swing by seven votes or four swing votes on a, a jam, you couldn't have got any more people in here. And to be honest with you, so I don't wanna discuss, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into discussion, okay, because we got a long agenda, so, all right? All right. Wait a minute.
I'm just learning the process, you, I might be one of those citizens you're gonna have to time. Think about that for the future, but, um, there, all of us have a different lens, and I have a different lens.
You have, I can't hear you, you gotta speak into the mic.
Looking at the special, the vote on the wetlands.
Right.
We look at things from our own lens. Um, and it doesn't mean I disrespect people that have a different viewpoint and voted a different way. I respect everyone, everyone's entitled to their opinion. But I just wanna share, my husband, Bill, was sharing when he grew up on Prospect Street in the heart, Dr. DeClarico lived across the street.
Right.
Behind Dr. DeClarico's was a big, huge field, he used to go there and pick blueberries and play out there. And as all of you know here, that property has been sold and developed. And what happened is there have been a lot of driveways and patios put up there that when, as high as Prospect Street is in our town, um, what happens when there's a surge of rain, it goes flying down, um, next to, I believe it's the Larson's House, down to Mayola's Road, and then it's like a river down there. So from my vantage point, we live on Willow Road, we have all three colors, my husband, Bill and I, we have to go to the Conservation Commission. Uh, it's not bothering me, because if they tell me that if I have to replace my driveway, I should consider crush stone versus putting tar, that's gonna create a runoff, that's gonna go in Edie Hanawell's cellar across the street from me, that's fine with me. I don't want anything I do to my property to cause a hardship to any of my neighbors. So I think it's time for our town to be a little proactive. God knows with the god awful stuff that's been happening in North and South Carolina, where the, you know, the environment is on our shores, we've gotta look out for one another. Thank you.
Onto new business. Move appointment of administrative assistant to the, um, Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator Office. Hey, I move Town Administrator, quick explanation, please.
Yes, th- thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just want you to know that we, uh, this position was opened and, uh, applicants had until the end of August to submit their applications. We had total of 10 to 15 different applicants. That was narrowed down to five. We had five interviews, and then that was narrowed down to two, had an additional two interviews. And after the conclusion of that process, very happy and pleased to put up for approval, Bobby Joe LaBelle Blair for the administrative assistant position to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator.
I might, I might add, I interviewed both candidates, the final two candidates, and I told the Town Administrator he should hire them both because they were that good. Very, very good. Great skill sets and computer skill sets, and they were, uh, very good. But he, he's got a recommendation here, and I, I agree with it, so. Go ahead, Enzo, you can read the...
Okay. I move Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Town Administrator's appointment of Bobby Joe, should I say LaBelle Blair? Bobby Joe LaBelle Blair, 271 Castle Road in the heart, to fill the vacated position of administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen in the Town Administrator's office with a term expiring June 30th, 2019.
Second motion.
Discussion.
Yeah. Um, I, I looked at her resume and I looked at her, uh, letter that she sent, uh, very professional and, um, I'm glad to see that you hired her.
Richie, any comments?
I know, I'm not sure.
Hearing and seeing none, all those in favors?
Aye.
End of his vote. Town Administrator report, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past, the first thing on the list is, uh, update on the FEMA related activities. Obviously, the town has estimated, uh, $1.6 million in storm-related damages. This week, we actually met with FEMA and MIMA and staff here in town, we actually had about a four-hour meeting to begin the process of officially dedicating, or officially claiming what the damages were from those two storms. That process on Thursday began a 60-day timeframe where we will provide additional information to FEMA and MIMA regarding those damages, all types of documentation. Um, on the 60, 60th day, essentially that list of damages is locked in. There is opportunity to make changes later, but for the most part, it's locked in. And so over the next 60 days, we'll be working closely with them to make sure that, and others in town, to make sure that that list is accurate and that we have as many claims as for the damage that was caused. And as soon as we have, um, a more developed list, I will share with the Board of Selectmen for your review. Um, on the Fox Hill Road and Castle Road stormwater damage, I talked, I talked about that the other day. Um, we are in the process still of, we got pretty much all the way there as far as clearing that pipe, and, um, we still have a little bit more work to do. So the next step in the process is to get an estimate on what the cost will be to finish clearing that pipe and perhaps extend the pipe on the other end of the seawall so that it's useful before this, this winter. So as soon as I have that for you, I'll, I'll share it with you. Also, on Tudor Beach, we have a...
May I?
Yes.
On that, we'll have, you'll have to discuss with the Concon, because we need to get machinery down there.
Yes, I've actually already, I, I let, um, Chairwoman of the Conservation Commission, I, I made them aware of the situation. I've also spoken with the homeowner that that pipe actually, we have an easement through her property, I've actually spoken with her as well. I hope to have some type of action plan prepared by next week on how we're gonna proceed on that, but certainly, um, engaging the Conservation Commission and access to the beach is gonna be something that we gotta talk to them about and make sure that we're performing the job under best, best practices.
Good, thank you. I think you're gonna, also you're gonna have to move some of those rocks down there, right, is that pipe, it's probably broken right there. And they put those rocks, they probably just squashed it.
Right, what happened, we got to about three feet shy of the, of the wall, and actually the pipe was broken in that spot. So the next part of the job is to continue jetting to the wall and see where we come out on the other side. And some of that may be moving some of those rocks, obviously, we don't wanna move, we don't wanna disturb that seawall as much as we have to, um, but that's definitely a potential.
We're taking care of the homeowner, sure, right?
Yes.
But it's still an easement.
Yeah, I know, but if we...
Understood, we take care of the homeowner, but this is very important to that whole section.
Oh, I know, I know.
Thank you.
On Tudor Beach, we have, we have, uh, our engineer, Dan Coughlin, has provided me a recommended, um, awardee and has given me a, a notice to proceed, letter to sign. After speaking with FEMA this week, uh, there's a couple more checks that I wanna do, make sure that we, you have to make sure that you meet, um, the most stringent regulations, whether state or federal or a combination of the two, when it comes to procuring. Otherwise, if you don't do that, there's a, there's risk there on being reimbursed later by FEMA. So it's a couple more checks, I, I assume, I, it would happen before I came on board, but I assume that it was, it was done to the most stringent rec, uh, regulations, so, but just wanna triple check that, because obviously we don't wanna, you know, risk not being reimbursed. So hopefully, by the end of the week.
Just interrupt for one second.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we talked about the, uh, you know, raising the, the height of Tudor Beach Wall, Short Beach, and Fallon Way, Parrot Road, Mayola's Road, so, um, just to give everybody an update on the MVP Committee, um, that Tony's very, very familiar with, um, we can, we're gonna have a workshop probably in, um, January. You know, the, the grant money that came in is for a workshop with probably 30 people from the town. So we've chosen a lot of good people from town, and actually we have a couple of people from, um, the university that are well versed in climate change and all that, so we'll be working, we'll, we'll have that, uh, that, that, um, um, meeting, and we'll come up with some ideas, and we'll come up with some, you know, some grants, grant writing to do that, to raise, because I've been getting calls, I'm sure Richie's been getting calls, and I'm sure T has been, about how the water is actually coming up too high. So I think that would, we could probably get some grant money for that. The clap valve down on Tudor Beach, it's stuck open, it keeps flooding Summer Street, um, Fallon Way, it's all undermined, Fallon, yeah, and, and Parrot Road. So, and we've chosen, we're gonna have, first of all, we're gonna have one from every committee, we're gonna have the police chief, fire chief, um, DPW superintendent, Tony. So it, it'll be a good thing, you know, we're gonna, and we're gonna have stakeholders from every part of town that affected by this, Fox Hill Road, Willow Road, East Point, we've already got people picked, so, uh, we're gonna be sending out emails to do that, so bear with us and maybe we can get some grant money to do this, to, to get, you know, get some action done, uh, on these, these areas.
To put, uh, to put a couple of feet up on Tudor Beach, 'cause we had discussed this, Richie, I, I really think that's a great idea, but that is all extra, right? That's all extra to go up there.
Yeah, he can't, he can't add, uh, we, we discussed it.
With FEMA, you can't add.
You can't add it to the current contract, no.
Okay, but that's something...
But we can do that with this, this, you know, this, uh, there's money out there, look, and, you know, Governor Baker is really, I think has come through, um, with a lot of programs, uh, that concern flooding and, and climate change and, uh, and so forth, so, and this is one of them, and we, we're right on top of it, so.
Well, the, the high water, I mean, the gentleman sent us an email, but I was down there and watched that, that regular, well, it wasn't a moon tide, but it was right at the top.
Right.
I mean, something has to be done, that was without a storm.
We're trying to get maps now of, uh, of a regular high tide now on Google Earth, I suppose you could do that, and then I wanna get another map with maybe 50 years ago what it was like. And you'll probably see what, you know, the difference, and, I think there's a big difference, so.
Good, thank you. I'm sorry, Richie, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, I, people are calling and asking, requesting, uh, you know, additional, they, they call me and tell me there's seaweed on top of their grass. Yeah, it was a extraordinary tide that came in, and the storm down south came up with high waves and all along Tudor Beach and, you know. That committee is great, but I think we've gotta push with our, uh, federal people. Uh, they're spending a lot of money from Maine to, I think all the way down to Florida, I, Dallas, building and retaining walls and height and everything, because, you know, the, the water is rising. I used to have sand at high tide on Short Beach, 20, 30 yards. Now when it's high tide, it comes right to the base of the wall, so there's no sand, and Tudor Beach is the same way. But I think the key to the whole thing, and I think the Corps of Engineers, well, hopefully I'm gonna try to get them down here, the cost of a breakwater, which is very similar to Winthrop, if you look at the breakwaters they have there, it'll stop the son, the surge. This will be, uh, from Bailey's Hill over to the WAF, you know, and then over at the Coast Guard, over the Coast Guard Beach from Little Nahat to Big Nahat, uh, we've gotta put these, uh, breakwaters in so that we stop the, uh, the storm surge coming across. And, and then we've got a, again, the walls on Castle Road, there's, some have them, some don't, and that water's coming, gonna continue coming through. And that pipe that used to be down there, uh, from Fox Hill Road to Kelly Greens, it was like this. And it was right by that pump station, and it went on and going. The problem is Doggy Beach and the sand just started backfilling, and the pipe got buried. And, and it, you gotta be, you've gotta go deep to get that pipe and then put a diffuser on the end to make sure there's no sand getting back in there after we spend the money, you know. And I'm not sure, I think we're gonna need some money for that project. I don't think 175,000 is sufficient. And because they've gotta redig from Fox Hill all the way to Willow Road. They're gonna redig those, those, uh, the sewage, not the sewage, the, there's, uh...
The ditches.
The ditches, the ditches are all filled and, and what you do is you, you, you bring a grate hall in, big giant grate hall during January, it very much frozen, and they really, they, they bends it and they farm the, the bank, and then they line that, those all the way down so there's a good flow going back to Bear Pond. Okay, I just, you know, I just give you my two cents.
Yeah, we, uh...
I used to live down there, I know, we used to ice skate from, uh, Castle Road all the way to Willow, all the way to, uh, Kelly Greens. We used to hike on those ponds, you know.
And we talked about that in the FEMA meeting as well, tho, those ditches and, and the need for dredging, there's obviously some money appropriated for that, but, um, there's obviously results from those storms and the flooding. There's potentially a significant amount of debris in those ditches that we don't, you can't even see, we don't even know about yet.
That's right.
So that's something that we've definitely including in the list of damages, some, a job that we haven't completed yet, but something that maybe we will be, uh, provided the opportunity to get some reimbursement for future work to clean up those debris.
Well, I wanna remind you, SS County Mosquito Control, they have the equipment to dig those ditches out.
Mm-hmm.
And we just gotta get on their schedule and bring them over.
They're part of that 175,000, and we're just waiting for the, for them to give us the green light.
Well, that money from that agency should be above the 175,000, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? You gotta, you gotta, we gotta, we gotta talk to somebody.
There is, yeah, there is, you're right, you're right. Just following up on Selectman Burrows' comments, I just, the state this year passed a $2.4 billion environmental bond bill, and $75 million of that goes to the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. So they're definitely made a, a strong commitment to climate change preparedness, and it's something that, you know, I'm happy to see that the town's taken, taken the next step to get involved in that program.
You take a good one.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, next on the list is the memorial bench policy. This past summer, our intern, Maisy Vasquez, who is, um, at the University of Maine, uh, she was, she interned with us over the summer herself, Mary Ellen Schuman, our DPW crew, Mary Lowe. Uh, what they did was they went around town and they did an assessment of the existing memorial benches in town, and you'll have in your booklet, there's a list there, they assessed which ones were in, um, they did a lot of work. They, they checked out which ones were in good condition.
A lot of work, yep.
Yep, bad condition, need replacing. And what they did was they reached out to the, the, those that are in poor condition and asked those residents, um, if they wanted to repair or replace those benches. Some folks got back to us saying yes, some folks got back to us saying no, and some we haven't gotten some responses from, but we're gonna do another round of, uh, reaching out to those that we didn't hear back from. And so the ones that are, the ones that have been deemed as needing replacement and the previous resident that was a sponsor of that bench does not want to replace it themselves is up for, um, replacement and can be offered to someone who's been... is up for, um, replacement and can be offered to someone who's been waiting on the list. I think a few years ago, a few years ago, the Board of Selectmen voted to have a moratorium on benches at the time, so there's no new locations offered in here except for at the golf course, and obviously if we were gonna, if we were going to provide for new benches at the golf course, we'd have to talk to the LSC as well. No need to take a vote on this at this time or to vote to lift the moratorium, but wanted to provide you this report that they, that they did, they did a great job on it, and for consideration, maybe at the next town meeting to lift the moratorium to fill the spots that, um, are up for repair.
The only thing I, this is excellent, by the way, they did a great job. I think we need a map. I mean, once you fill or not fill the ones that are in bad shape, we can start there.
Mm-hmm.
But we need to create, because we can't have, you know, benches everywhere, but we need to, we need to vote exactly what areas we can have benches in, memorial benches, and the cost and everything goes associated with it. You gotta pour that cement slab and everything, you know, so.
Yeah, again, they weren't proposing any new locations other than potentially the golf course, this was more of, there are benches out there that need replacement that the previous sponsor doesn't want to replace, and so we could offer it to somebody else.
I'd be careful with the golf course, putting benches down there.
Yeah.
Especially the way that some of those guys hit.
Yeah, there is a moratorium on.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, there is. But I mean, some of those guys.
Yeah, they knew, so.
Including myself, I mean, sometimes, you know.
But you gotta be careful with beaches, too.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and all that, so. There are, there's a couple of spaces up near the cemetery, um, Mrs. Collins had one put there, and there's one that you could put next to it, so there are, there are a couple of empty spaces that we could put in.
So we can put together a map and.
Yeah.
Use the colors from this list so you can see which poor condition benches are where in town.
Well, the people, the people put in benches and they just, uh, they, they just let them go, and then they move or they forget about it, you know, and the benches have been there for fifty years, you know, so whenever you gotta replace them.
We did get a good amount of responses from those that we reached out, from the people that we reached out to, and they're offering to repair them themselves.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that was good, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Approve event requests.
Okay, um, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the cow wash sponsored by the Swampscott High School Girls Soccer Team League, to be held behind the DPW garage on ten thirteen, eighteen, from nine to one P.M., with a rain date of ten fourteen eighteen.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. We will now take a recess until eight o'clock when we will have the tax classification.
Mr. Chairman, I, well, you have, um, your announcement, your closing announcement, so, you know what I mean, once we.
Oh, once we finish, we can do it?
Yeah, once we're sat, yeah, take that up.
Okay, never mind. We'll go to seven closing announcements. Flu clinic. Town Hall, Wednesday, September twenty-sixth, three P.M. to six P.M. Thursday, September twenty-seventh, four P.M. to seven P.M. Both days open to adults eighteen years and older. Both hauling days, Monday, October eighth, and Saturday, October thirteenth, call Josh Lynn Marine at nine seven eight four six two nine seven one seven to schedule an appointment. And Richie, would you do the next one?
Well, the, the Board would like to recognize we should, we should bring up the Legion.
Right here.
No, no.
I'll read it.
Oh, no, no, I didn't, okay, I'll do it.
Yeah.
The American Legion's the hundredth anniversary. World War I ended on November eleventh, uh, nineteen eighteen. The American Legion started to develop across the country. The first legion was started in Paris, France, here in Nahat, uh, Chata, says that in nineteen nineteen, they established a legion post in Nahat, Martin G. Robbins Post Two Fifteen. At some point this year, maybe Veterans Day is in November, the Legion will be doing something special to commemorate the hundred year anniversary on this occasion, and the Legion will keep us posted. It's a big thing for us, you know, the Legion went around and, uh, they've got great quarters, you know, and they took half of their proceedings, and we sold the building on Coolidge Road, and, um, then they put in, I believe, seventy percent of the profits from that building into the Coast Guard Station, and then we've got a twenty-five year and an additional twenty-five year lease with the Nahat Preservation Trust, which is, which is great, which is great stuff, so, um, it's, um, the hundred years, this is big for the Legion is, and I think the Legion's total about fifty-five members, and I know there's a lot of veterans in town that are not members, 'cause they say, yeah, but they should join, they should join the American Legion because there's a nice little post, and it's right on the beach, right on, you know, but, um, and, and, and they do very well, there's, there's committed individuals down there that keep this running, you know, and, um, our own Molly Condon, who's now, we used, who's, uh, she's commander, past commander, and she's, uh, she's really dedicated, she's got the posts cranking. So in November, maybe we'll have them up for a hundred anniversary.
Yes.
And we can present them some sort of a town plaque or something to put on their wall.
Absolutely.
Suggestion, and then, and then maybe have, um, you know, some other ideas and suggestions that I have, I don't want to leak them out tonight.
Only if you promise to present it.
Yeah, I'll present it, absolutely, no question, no question about it.
No, there's no question, right.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Notice of Tax Classification Hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, at eight P.M. in the Town Hall, three thirty-four Nahat Road, Nahat, Mass., on the issue of tax classification. The purpose of the hearing is to allow taxpayers the opportunity to present their views on whether or not residential, commercial, industrial, open space, and personal property should be taxed with one rate for all property classes, or to use different tax rates for different classes of property. The hearing will include a presentation by the Board of Assessors. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of Selectmen shall determine whether or not one tax rate shall be applied for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen tax rate. Currently, the town taxes at a single tax rate for all property classes. In addition, the Board of Selectmen will determine whether or not to allow exemptions for small commercial businesses and owner occupied residential properties. All concerned taxpayers are encouraged to attend to present their views orally or in writing. If there are any questions about the hearing, please contact Sheila Hamilton in the Assessor's office at seven eight one five eight one oh two one two. Jess Lee Taylor, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, posted eight thirty eighteen, Townhallinahat.org, lint item nine six two thousand and eighteen, nine thirteen two thousand and eighteen.
Now, do you want to bring them up?
Yeah, they're right here.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Want to come up here, Sheila? Thank you.
Your only event, and I thank you for holding this hearing. I just wanted to give you an update that the assessments were approved, uh, we had an interim analysis this year, and they were approved in July, and our new growth was approved August the sixth, and we had sixty-one thousand and fifty-five dollars in new growth, up thirty-two percent from the average of the last three years. So it's, um, it's looking good, construction's going on, so hopefully we get the same next year. The average single family home has increased, and it's now six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, and that's up a whole three point two percent assessed value from the prior year. Again, though, um, our residential, um, is made up of ninety-five and a half percent. We have, you know, not much in commercial, industrial, and open space, and personal property. So historically, that's why we choose a tax rate that is just residential one, and since we don't have any, um, summer homes like we used to, that's why we historically now vote no on the residential exemption, and again, we don't have too much in the commercial, so that's why we don't shift any burdens onto the commercial property, so that's why we would generally vote no on that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Including the public.
Exactly, even from the public. This is a pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Any comments, gentlemen?
Oh, there's one thing, we do have a change, and I think everyone's been alerted, that we all have to be signed in, all the Selectmen and the Assessors. Peggy and I have sat, and we've tried to get passwords, you should be looking for emails, 'cause you're gonna have to go in and sign now, the LA Five Form, and then the, um, the Assessors' the Recap Form, so when it's all said and, said and done, the gateway system through the Department of Revenue.
I have a password, but I forget.
Well, Peggy will send you a new one, so please, if you've changed any, um, email addresses, please just make sure you have an updated email address with Peggy.
I received mine already for the.
And then we'll do a little training after a meeting.
How do I get onto the site, I don't, I didn't get that message.
We'll, I'll help you.
Oh, no, I just, just sent it to me, I can, I can, I've got, she, Peggy gave me the password already, my password.
I didn't get nothing.
You what?
I didn't get anything.
Well, she doesn't like you, that's why.
I think we have to, they have to sign it after the next meeting, is that right?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Oh, we can sign it?
And we'll just do it in Tony's office, yes, so you have to log in, we'll have to log out each person, 'cause you have to log in with your email, so we'll do it right here in the Town Hall.
And then we gotta sign it, then here?
You sign it, you'd sign it on the computer.
Yeah, very good.
You just have to have your own credentials and your email address, and I think that's it. Okay?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a residential factor of one and not to adopt a residential exemption or small commercial exemption for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. This hearing will be continued to ten eighteen eighteen, at which time the Board of Assessors will inform us of the excess levy capacity for the current FY nineteen.
I have a question, the, um, veterans and people filing for exemption, they have to get that in soon, or?
No, that, not until after we have our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so at that point, then I'll remind everyone.
Oh, good.
Yeah, okay, and I'll put it on the website, too. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now, we're waiting to hear from our lawyer.
Yeah, she's.
That's okay.
I, I don't have a response from her.
Nothing yet.
No, but I can talk to her, I did talk to her for, at length.
You did, okay.
It's fine, okay, and then when she shows up, she'll go further, okay.
I don't know if she's on her way or not, she's not responding to me, so.
Let's start the, let's start the.
Okay. Onto item six, ongoing business, special town meeting follow-up. Our lawyer is en route?
Potentially.
Potentially, but I'll turn it over to the town administrator, thank you.
Thank you, so last town, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting, I was asked to reach out to, um, Lauren Goldberg at KP Law to ask her about what the options would be as far as another vote on the Wetlands Bylaw that was voted in at the special town meeting, and primarily the question was, can you do it by a ballot? Opening a polling station, just do a ballot question, or does it have to be at a special town meeting? Lauren informed me that in order to vote on the bylaw, it would have to be at another town meeting. It cannot be done through an election or, um, a scenario where you have something that looks like an, an election, like you open a certain, open polls for a certain timeframe, there needs to be deliberation, and that's essential for the vote to, um, to be a formal action. So we have, so in order to do so, we'd have to either the Board of Selectmen or by petition, schedule a, a town meeting where the, where the question, naturally because the bylaw is already adopted, the question would be to rescind, you can't have another, can't have a vote on to adopt it again. Also, with that, we can do, she's been part of, and she offered to help us out, she's been part of a lot of, you know, large town meetings on different things like, um, major developments or, uh, in, in town, commercial developments, things like that, so she's actually has a lot of experience in that and has offered to help us plan if we were to consider something. She said it is, it is possible to have pre-printed ballots, to have, um, when the question is asked, to have people check in by stating their name and address, they receive a ballot at that time, they make their vote, and they submit it either in a box or through the ballot machines. The question is, um, if we are expecting a large group, is where the location would be? So we could have it here in the Town Hall, we could use a satellite location, so basically have it here and somewhere else, such as the Johnson School. In order to do so, you would have to be able to communicate visually with audio and the, um, the ability to vote at both locations, and obviously the clerks would want to be able to communicate with each other so that you have, if you, if you sign in here with the clerk, you can't go and sign in down there. There is technology that could be rented or, um, you know, that has been used in other towns. You could make the space, like Richie was talking about before, you could rent a tent of something like that, or rent a, rent a building here in town, or, you know, use, use that space for the meeting, or finally, lastly, you could get special legislation through the state that would allow us to host the meeting outside of town boundaries. So those are your four options as far as locations go, but as far as, again, um, whatever, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them based on what I had, my conversation with her, but it's, it was actually pretty interesting going back and looking at some of our bylaws and taking a look at some of the suggestions on how we could do this vote, and it, and, um, looking at some of the minutes from previous meetings back in the seventies and the eighties, and reading the transcripts of how these, our bylaws that came about is actually, um, pretty interesting, pretty interesting task for myself to do, but it is, it is, um, it is not, because it is a general bylaw, it has to be done at, at a, at a town meeting.
What about, um, what about having a meeting here on Coolidge, and, um, after the meeting, people would have to file out, and then come back twenty minutes later or so, and come back in and vote?
She actually mentioned.
And they'd have to check in like they normally would do on a, on a, on an election.
She actually mentioned that in another town, that she was part of that process, that when the. when the, when the motion to call the question came about, they actually emptied the building and people got in line, and that's how they checked people back in so that you made sure you had an accurate count for each vote.
And we can use the ballot machine.
You can use the ballot machine.
You can get the prompts all updated for that, all ready to go, right? Yeah. It makes more sense, I think, to do something like, something like that, because it's inexpensive to do it that way. There's no expense.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of details and a lot of planning, I think, that would go into it, but those are, just wanted to check what the legal procedures would be.
It seemed you were on step five, step three and four. What, I mean, we're gonna vote to rescind the bylaw that was approved by the Attorney General?
Yes, essentially, that would be what the, that would be what the vote would be, because you can't, because it's already been adopted.
Right.
And it has been approved by the Attorney General, and since then, the clerk has posted it according to the state law in five locations, so it is in effect. There can be a vote, you could have a special town meeting to, to move to rescind that bylaw.
Then what do we do?
It just comes off of, then it goes, yeah. If it were to, if it were to pass, if, if the rescind vote were to pass, then the bylaw would come off of the books and you would go, basically, essentially, where we were before the special town meeting, where just the State Wetlands Protection Act applies to those areas.
So, hold on, let me finish. So we're gonna rescind the vote, and then we're gonna do what? We're gonna come back to put that question on the ballot again, back in the town meeting?
No, well, it's, it's up to the Board of Selectmen and/or by petition if you wanted to do, if that were to happen, but theoretically, it could bounce back and forth. Right now, or at another Board of Selectmen meeting, or by petition, you could decide to have a town meeting to have that vote.
Well, I, I'm confused. I, I, we're gonna rescind the vote, and then we're gonna do nothing? And if we're gonna move to rescind or have a special town meeting to rescind that vote, shouldn't we establish the next phase, step two? I mean, it's fair to everyone to have that back on the ballot or something, discussion, one way or the other.
So what you would, if the Board of Selectmen desired to host another special town meeting to take this up, you would have a vote here on whether or not you wanted to do that. If you did so, at that time, you would have to set a date, location, time specific, and at that meeting, the discussion would be whether or not to rescind the bylaw, because it is officially on, in effect.
So the actual vote for that day would be on the ballot, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
To rescind that question that was already approved.
That is in, that, the bylaw that's in effect.
If that, if that fails...
If that fails, the bylaw stays in effect, and the Conservation Commission continues with their process of developing regulations.
If it's reversed and wins, then we gotta, we've gotta do what? We gotta have another?
You don't have to do anything after that.
Well, I think it'd be only fair to both sides if you're gonna have, if you're gonna rescind something and not have an option to go back and revote that.
Again, it would be, it would then, we'd be in the same position we are now, where it could either be, that could be decided by petition or by Board of Selectmen.
Well, the Board of Selectmen should be fair when they decide something like that. If they're gonna rescind something and then not put it back out in a sequence, so you go to step two and have it all planned out, and the date sequence to go through with this. It's not fair to either side just to sit on it and just rescind it.
So I don't know if, maybe I'm not explaining it.
Well, no, no, I understand what you're saying. You understand that if we have a special town meeting and a vote to rescind, the only question on that ballot is gonna be rescind the vote, correct?
Rescind the bylaw, yes.
So then we're back to ground zero, so it's, everything's even, all right?
There's, there would be, if it were to win, if, if there were more votes to rescind, then there would be no wetlands bylaw in effect.
But that wouldn't be fair to either side if they don't have a chance and opportunity to come back in here and vote one way or the other. I mean, it would be, it would be the honest and fair way.
I guess, I guess the, I guess theoretically, if the, if the Board of Selectmen were to decide to have another special town meeting, that would be the venue to have a discussion about whether or not to keep or to rescind the bylaw, the result of which theoretically, you could have another meeting after that, you could add it to the annual town meeting in April to have another, you know, either by petition or the Board of Selectmen can choose to do it again.
Well, the Board of Selectmen, if the Board of Selectmen is gonna vote to rescind this vote, they should also vote to go back and, and start over again and put the both questions on a ballot. And it could be for the annual town meeting, if you have a date sequence.
I guess...
And this question here, we've got a ballot, what, November? Can we add to that ballot now for November?
No, because that isn't, that's an election. This has to be at an open, it has to be at a special town meeting or annual town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, may I? If Richie's...
Yeah, Martin, go ahead. I think that's what we're doing. If you rescind the vote, you rescind the vote. It just, it goes away, and we go back to the old Wetlands Protection Act, which is, end of stormwater, our stormwater bylaw, which was adopted in 2015, which really supersedes this amendment. It should, anyway.
But it's not...
To put it back on the ballot, you, I mean, to put it back on the ballot as what? As amended? I mean, that's what you're saying? Do you want to amend it, or?
No, I'm saying, the Board of Selectmen votes to have a special town meeting and a ballot question on this bylaw that just passed, and it passes to rescind it.
Yep.
Now, what vehicle is the, the people involved, one way or the other, to put it back on another town meeting?
It would either be by the Board, the Board of Selectmen or by petition.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanna know.
Anybody can call for a town meeting if you get enough votes.
No, I understand, but I think if the Board's gonna vote to rescind, to have a special town, to have a rescind ballot, they should step up front and, okay, make it, make it, make it, uh, put another sequence of events, which is step two, to put that back on, to have the chance that people vote one way or the other.
Well, I thought that we did do that. We had it scheduled for September 17th, and we were superseding.
No, 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 I, no, no, forget that. It's all passed, okay? They want it in August, they got it in August. That's fine. Now, this is not, this is us now. This is the Board of Selectmen controlling and setting up and establishing the sequence of events for this bylaw. And I'm saying, if we're gonna vote to have a special town to rescind it, you've gotta give an opportunity to have that back on the ballot, both questions, so we can, one way or the other. We just can't rescind something and not be fair to either, well, one side or the other.
But you really are, because you, if it doesn't, if it doesn't get rescinded, then it...
Can I just...
It stays in effect.
That's correct. And then we cancel the meeting.
Can I just help try to clear something up? We're using the word rescind simply because it has been adopted at the last meeting. So if, basically what you're saying is, we're having a revote, where if you wanted to, you could decide to have another special town meeting to revote on whether or not we should have a wetlands bylaw. So it would, I guess, be that opportunity that you're talking about. But, but technically, what the question would read is to rescind, because you wouldn't be asking a question like, do you want to adopt or not adopt, because it's already in effect.
That's right.
If, I don't know if I'm, I'm trying to clear it up.
You're muddying up the waters. This is a very simple question, you know? If the Board of Selectmen are gonna vote to have a special town meeting, and why we're having this special town meeting is to rescind the vote of that bylaw, A, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If that fails, we don't need another meeting. The bylaw is in, right? But if it passes to rescind it, what is the next avenue for the Board of Selectmen to take? Okay, since we started this process, or should we stay out of it completely and say, let the vote stand?
It wasn't our bylaw, Richie. It wasn't our bylaw, so what's...
Well, the bylaw was passed, and it was approved by the Attorney General.
It was supposed to be our bylaw, but it wasn't.
No, they took that out of our hands. I understand that. But we're, now all of a sudden, we're gonna be jumping back in the fray here and say, okay, we're gonna take charge with the Board of Selectmen, we're gonna rescind that vote or make, give it to the townspeople to vote on it, and if they rescind it, okay, maybe the people that vote to rescind it is gonna win by three votes. What would you do then? You've gotta give another step two to have that back, that question back on a ballot or a special, or annual town meeting, one or the other. I prefer annual, which is the sequence, we're, we're in September, October, by the time they get this thing done, April will be right around the corner, so you put the article back in the warrant so that people can discuss it and vote on it. But I, I, I just fail to see taking away a vote to rescind it, and, you know, we're not being fair either way. There's a, there's a, there's a degree of fairness in this thing that we need, we need to cover. Yes, it was hot, yes, it was way overcrowded, we should've, we should've done a lot of things, but we didn't do it. The vote passed, and then the Attorney General upheld it. So now, you know, and we think, well, maybe there's a lot of areas concerned here, because there's the question, I'm not sure people were aware of it, educated about it, who knows? I don't know, but I like to give people a shot at it, one way or the other. To vote for rescind is to start over again and then redo the whole thing again, and that's what I'm saying. And I, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for anything without step two or three behind this thing, and there's a date sequence of this thing. If we don't have that, I'm, you know, I'll be honest with you, there's fairness here. We've gotta have fairness.
If I may?
Yeah, I'm done.
I think you're both missing the boat, as far as I'm concerned. This is about the process of how this happened. It was not well done, and you can ask 90% of this town, I'm sorry, you can ask a lot of people in this town, and they will say the process was not done well. We've talked about it, you've talked about it, this is not about rescinding, this is about having another vote. In my book, it's about having another vote. This is a process question for me, I'm the process guy. That town meeting was not processed correctly, in my book. And you give the people the chance to come back to vote, and it becomes a law, or it is what it is. It already is a law, but it gives everybody a chance to come back and at least say the process was better. And that's how I feel.
Well, I think, Richie, I think you're, you're right. It is, it is the process, it was done, it wasn't very democratic, as far as I'm concerned. It was taken out of our hands, it was boiling hot, and I don't think, I think I've gotten hundreds of emails about this, and people want to know why, how, how they fit into the picture, and I'll say it again, I mean, if you wanna talk about stormwater damage, then you better start, you better color the whole town yellow, because it starts at the And the process was done wrong, sincerely done wrong, and I think that we need to have another town meeting to correct it.
Well, she had mentioned 8:30.
She's still in Norton, she just texted me, she's still at the Norton Town Meeting, so she's not gonna be, we could, we could call if you want.
No, that's not, that's not necessary. You got her notes, Ryan, you took her notes.
We can call her if, if you'd like.
But if she's at a town meeting, I would say no.
Yeah, she's not gonna answer.
I don't think we need to...
You got the answers.
Happy to provide you each of her, I mean, she, this is, after talking to her, I asked her what the process would be on a wetlands bylaw in order, I said, can you go, can you revisit the special town meeting that happened? She said, no, you cannot open that meeting once it's closed, it's closed. Only action you can do on a bylaw is to have another town meeting, whether it be a special one, an annual one, by petition, or decided by the Board of Selectmen to host it. The technical question would be to rescind, because it is in effect, just like the last one was to adopt, because it wasn't in effect. And then through that, you could, you could have pre-printed ballots and make sure that the process is done better, but that it would have to be at a town meeting where there's, you can deliberate until procedurally, the question is, you know, you move to vote on the question.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would entertain a motion to schedule a special town meeting to rescind the, to rescind the vote of the August 27th petitioned town meeting pertaining to the
Again, just if I might, I believe that your motion would be to rescind the bylaw, not to rescind the vote, you cannot go back into that meeting.
Rescind the bylaw, right.
Yeah, just to be clear.
Okay, so to rescind the bylaw that was voted in on the August 27th petitioned town meeting to the wetlands bylaw.
I'll second it for discussion. I still, that second part I discussed, when are we gonna set that up?
It would be a separate, it's its own...
Entity.
Entity. By setting it up now, you're assuming that the rescind vote is gonna happen. You don't know the result of that question yet. So you would then, after that, if you wanted to, move to have another special town meeting or move to add it to the annual, or someone could do it by petition. Just technically speaking, that's how the procedure would work.
I would also add that we have it in December.
December.
Well, Dave Parland's not available in November, and the town clerk has about 400 elections in November. She's extremely busy at this time of year, I mean, we get big state elections, she's had election after election after election, so...
So...
What day in September? You gonna have it Saturday or Monday, or what are you gonna do?
Generally speaking, we always have them on Mondays, but I would say Saturday.
I would say Saturday.
So you have to, if you're gonna make a motion to have the town meeting tonight, you would have to give a time, date, and location certain. You can say town hall and potentially the school, or you can just, you know, that's something I think that we can, generally, it's more date and location and time is something that can be clarified later.
We get the 8th, the 15th, the 22nd, and the 29th.
You gotta wait both the 22nd and 29th.
Right.
So it's gonna be... So it's gonna be the first, eighth, or fifteenth?
December first, twelve o'clock. Town hall, potentially Johnson School. Well, it's, well...
What do you mean Johnson School?
We could use it to Skype if we need a second location.
Right.
Because we've already had, we've already adopted the Skype rule anyway. I mean, I don't think we have to worry about that because we've, I mean, Manning, Mike Manning used to Skype in from Chicago.
No, Lauren said that's allowed.
Right.
If you have a satellite location, you have to make sure that you're able to visually
Right.
and hear and vote at both locations and communicate between the two.
People are not gonna wanna go, leave the town hall and go to Johnson School, I mean, that's just not gonna do it, they wanna be in here.
No, they can vote if, I mean, people that wanted to go to the Johnson School could go there and stay there and vote there.
No one's gonna go to Johnson School. They're gonna stay here.
Right.
If it's five hundred people again, it's gonna be here.
Okay, so I'll entertain the motion.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, you got a motion on the table, don't make any more motions.
All right.
Let's discuss this motion.
Let's, let's add to it, let's, let's put the date, the time, let's put the location, which would be here, and I'd like the idea of removing people and then bringing them back in. You know, so it's a single file and they, they have to check in.
We don't need a special...
It's more orderly that way, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
People, you know, people voted already on this, so they know the issue. The special town meeting, I, I say we open the ballots up at seven AM, have the ballots prepared at seven AM, even before the special town meeting.
You can't, you can't do that.
What do you mean, you can't, who says you can't do it?
It constitutes an election.
Lauren, basically, Lauren Goldberg from KP Law, that you can't, it has to be done at a special town meeting when you're voting on a, on a bylaw, it has to be at a deliberative meeting, you can't just open a meeting and...
I'd like to hear from her on that, I'd like to get a ruling on that, and I'd like to get the ruling in written form. I think we should postpone this meeting, have it next Thursday night, we, she can be present, and people informed of exactly what we're doing here. And this way here, we can have, she's right in front of me and she can give the opinion, the legal opinion.
Next town, next Board of Selectmen meeting is, is the fourth?
The fourth of...
October?
Well, we can, what's next week, what's the schedule next week? This is what, what's the day's date, the twentieth?
Today's the twentieth.
When we have it next, which, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Twenty-seventh.
September twentieth, twenty-seventh, next Thursday night.
This is the second time we've done this, Richie.
Why can't I get an opinion from a council? And I, I need a legal opinion, and, you know, and I wanna make sure what we're doing here and people realize what we're doing here. I mean, I, you know, it's kinda like, hello? I wanna be fair to everyone, I want this to be fair. You're saying the vote at the last meeting was unfair because of the heat, five hundred people was unfair, okay, I'll go along with that, I agree with that. But I disagree with not having the presence and the people and the legal opinion that people could have an opportunity to say what they say. And Thursday night, we'll just have that on the agenda. What's wrong with that? You wait a week. We could still schedule the meeting, then you can make a motion for December first or the eighth to have the special town meeting on the noon time. Plenty of time, you got the whole month of October, you got the whole month of November, you got eight weeks prior to that, December first. Am I, is that correct time? Is that enough time?
I just, uh...
Don't you need fourteen days to have a special town meeting? So it's more than enough time to set the meeting, so next Thursday night, we can have just that on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I disagree, Mr. Chairman, I think we've gone through this twice, and I think that people know, I've been called, I've been emailed.
Who knows? Who, who knows? I don't think they know.
I've talked to our council on, on this, about this.
You talked to the council.
Yeah, you've had, you have every opportunity to call her.
Well, you know...
Just like I have.
Well...
I, I made a suggestion, Mr. Chairman. My suggestion is that we meet next Thursday, the twenty-seventh, six o'clock with Lauren. If she can make it, in the meantime, I, I'm, I'm calling the vote. We can rescind it next week if, if, if her advice is to do that.
I think she already did, didn't she? Tony?
She already, I'm sorry, what's the question?
I think she already, didn't she already tell you we could do this?
Yeah, that's what I just explained, but if you wanna hear it from her, we can call her right now.
No, I don't, I, I trust you, Tony.
Oh.
I just think, I just think, I just think the town council should be present and given the opinion on the live TV broadcast for the folks at home and who are not here. So they, they, you want transparency and you want, you know, fairness, this way here, uh, people have an opportunity. The only thing gonna be on the agenda is that special town meeting. This way here, we can get a feel, okay, and then, uh, have the town council give the opinion, and then we can vote on it, and that's kinda fair to the people. Everyone knows exactly what we're discussing. It's not something we're hiding or behind or anything else, we're putting it on the table, you know, to all, to hear. And that's the only fair thing. Because you're saying to me, and I'm, and I am agreeing with you, that the first town meeting was unfair because of the heat, because of the overcrowding, because of a lot of questions. Too many people, this building hold, what, two thirty, Mac? Two forty? We had five hundred, over five hundred and fifty people in here, they were everywhere. And they, they didn't have a chat, and it was like boiling, and it was a hundred degrees in here. So I, 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 I say we hold off on the vote until next Thursday night, that's, that's my recommendation. You can vote now, but had, I'm, I'm gonna vote against it, but I'm gonna let you know that.
Okay. I call the vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Against.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, is that in favor for holding it over?
We just voted to have the special town meeting.
For the special town meeting. So you said no, and Enzo and I said yes.
For?
December first.
December first, twelve o'clock, town hall. And then set a meeting up for next Thursday with Lauren.
We'll do both.
And that meeting is gonna be for what?
To rescind the vote.
Rescind...
The meeting with Lauren?
Who's gonna, who's gonna have the article? Is Lauren gonna write up the actual article for the warrant?
It's for the special town meeting?
She can, uh, for...
How would you advertise it to the public if the people don't know what you're coming for a special town meeting for?
Or a step one, Richie?
Wha, I'm sorry.
You got the meeting set for September, December first.
Okay.
Well, who's gonna write that article up and the legal ramification on this?
We'll use Lauren Goldberg, that's her job.
Okay, and she's gonna have that prepared by next Thursday night?
She don't have to.
She don't have to.
No, no.
Needs...
Well, she, if she wants it, sure.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have her do it.
Absolutely. Have her here, prepared for the wording of it, and this December first at twelve o'clock, good enough, and we need her to tell us Richie wants it written, that's fine.
Well, you, you, you know, you, you need documentation and a paper trail, when you go back in history in a selectmen's meeting, you're checking notes.
And the options, it'll also give us the options of what to do, how to do it, uh, the three or four options that you guys have, you know, that we discussed.
Yep.
That's fine. Actually, you know something, Tony, you should check with Lauren first to see when she's available. She might not be available next Thursday night, we want her to have a clear schedule so that we can, and then we can post the meeting.
I'll, I'll make sure that she's available, if she's not, I'll let you know.
Right.
And we won't have a Board of Selectmen meeting that night, and we'll have the, the following Thursday on the fourth, and I'll make sure she's here for that. But regardless, over the next two Thursdays, I'll try to get her here.
I don't think it has to be a Thursday night either, if she's available Wednesday or...
Okay.
No, whatever. Is that okay with you guys?
Well, no, I, I, the chairman here is, is served that we changed the meetings, the summer schedule from, uh, from Wednesday back to Thursday, if we're gonna have a special Selectmen's meeting, it should be on Thursday night.
Yep.
And starting at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
That's a sequence of events going forward.
Twenty-seventh at seven or the fourth at seven, please.
Well, that's all right, we'll just...
Yeah.
Yeah, we can just, you know...
Change the meeting.
Yeah, it's, you know... So tell me what we did, we voted for a special town meeting on December first at twelve o'clock.
Yep.
Here.
Yeah. I'd have to make it one o'clock, people have something to eat, you know? Come at twelve, we don't want to get nothing to eat.
And it was a, uh, two to one vote, you voted no.
Correct.
Okay.
Motion was there, are we all set?
Uh, wait a minute.
Wait, there?
Did we, I'm sorry if I missed it, did you guys vote on the, uh, girls soccer car wash event request?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. You were on the phone trying to get Lauren.
Okay.
I'm motion, I'm motion adjourned.
Second?
Yep, and I'll second it.
We are adjourned eight forty.